Get the meeting started. Good evening. Welcome to the January 7th, 2020. Happy New Year, everyone. City Planning Commission meeting. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call.
Member Woods. Member Briggs.
Here.
Member Mills.
Here.
Member Milstein.
Here.
Member Gibrandle.
Here.
Member Ackerman.
Here.
Member Swab.
Here.
Member Abrams.
Here.
Member Hammerschmidt.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Excuse me, do we have any introductions this evening?
No, we do not.
Do you have a commissioner that will move the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Sauvay. Any changes to the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Before us this evening, we have minutes from the meeting on December 17th, 2019. Do you have a commissioner that will move? Moved by Commissioner Woods, seconded by Commissioner Gibrandle. Any discussion or changes with the minutes from December 17th? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And they are approved. We move on to reports. We'll begin with a report from our city council representative, Commissioner Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Happy New Year to the board and all of our guests. Also, I believe, happy birthday, Commissioner Gibrandle.
Thank you.
Commissioner Briggs sold you out. Only two items of note from last night's city council meeting relevant to this body. First, as you may have heard, the city was moving to annex a large number of parcels in Ann Arbor Township into the city. They're within the city's annexation boundary, which has been our practice to try to annex township islands in that area over the course of the last few decades. The State Boundary Commission actually recently voted to reject all of those annexations. The city council last night did, though, vote to give direction to the city attorney to appeal that decision. Relevant to this body is rezoning upon annexation would be required for all of those parcels. The other item to mention, which will be coming to Planning Commission soon, is the issue of short-term rentals. Airbnb, VBRO are all pretty disruptive technology platforms that have really changed the hospitality industry. And Ann Arbor has experienced a lot of change as a result. Some local investors, some out-of-town investors, some residents just renting out their homes on game day weekends. But in any case, it's time to move some regulations forward. Council gave direction to city staff and subordinate bodies like the Planning Commission to pursue a particular set of, or a particular regulatory framework. The zoning component of that will be coming to this body, and hopefully, we will have it back to council by July 30th.
Great, thank you. Do we have a report from Mr. Leonard?
We do not.
All right. Planning Commission officers and committees, written communications and petitions, and then various correspondences to the City Planning Commission. I do want to note that one of the communications that we receive is from site or township giving us notice that they are updating their master plan. All right. At this time, it is audience participation. This is time for members of the audience to address the Planning Commission in regards to items that are not on the agenda for this evening. So if you have an item that you'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda for this evening, you may step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have up to three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you. I don't know if you can hear me. Today, I remembered to where my hearing is, but I need all the help I could get. So I appreciate if any of you use your microphones. So far, I have heard not very little. So that would be my only request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the Planning Commission in regards to an item that is not on the agenda this evening?
By the way, this is not on.
I believe we're working on that. Thank you. All right. Seeing no one, we'll move on to public hearings scheduled for the next business meeting. We have two items that are, one new item and one returning item. Fiscal year 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Plan for City Planning Commission approval. And the Michigan Government and Schools Credit Union will also be returning to the meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, January 22nd at 7:00 PM. All right. Now, moving on to regular business. The first item before us, 9A, is the standard at Ann Arbor Site Plan for City Council approval. Our procedure for this evening is we'll have the petitioner address the Planning Commission. They'll have up to 10 minutes to address the board. From there, we'll get a staff report, a public hearing, and then we'll go to discussion. So I will hand it over to the petitioner.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, you can hear me. I'll do my best. My name is John Mayewski with Mayewski Architects, and we are here to present the standard. The site itself, I think everybody's familiar with, but it's often referred to as the former or current DTE site. And it sits between Williams, Main, and Packard. And then to the east side, the alley actually divides the site. We are glad to be here. It's been kind of a long road. I think we're either on our, we've had six or seven, I was trying to count, neighborhood meetings. So we've really used that process, as I think we always do, to really benefit the project and really try to get the input from everybody. And I think, for the most part, we've definitely tried to address all of those concerns as we've gone around the property and have gone over this period of time. They have, as I think Jeff did an excellent job in the report, kind of varied from small issues to larger issues. And as we worked through each different scheme that we looked at, we kept trying to address some of those issues. Some were subtle, some were larger. Typically, a lot had to do with the way the alley was working, how we were going to provide for instance for Amazon to make a delivery for packages, how we had ingress and egress out of the property. And so I'll kind of walk you through some of the things that were a result of that. Okay, first thing. Which button makes it advance? Did I try that? Okay, let's try it out.
Is there a mouse up there?
Yeah.
There's the mouse.
It's okay, I can talk fast, but it's not these. Sometimes technology is more complicated than we want to make it. Just really quick, the team introduction is really something that we can really run through, but we're lucky to have Jason and Eric here from Landmark Properties. And if any questions come up, they can address those. I'll try to take it on the architectural side, but I have Josh from our office as well. He's the associate in charge of the project. And Scott and Jonathan are here as our civil engineers, and Scott will probably address something once I kind of run through a little bit of the architecture. And we didn't have to go too far to find our structural engineer, which we're very happy with. It's Darvis and Associates, and it's actually Bob Darvis. So Bob was my professor in school, and he's still actively working. And he doesn't have to look too far, because I think many of you are familiar, they're right across the street from the site. Landmark as a company has really been a wonderful group to work with and work for. I think they really feel like they embrace the team aspect. I can tell you from personal experience, they're very different than a lot of other developers. They really kind of have a whole philosophy about the way a project is built. And it's not only from the design perspective, they have architects on board, they have an incredible construction team on board. And what it really means for us, and actually for the community, is a project is very well thought through before it even comes to you, or before it even starts construction. So we've been really active, kind of going back and forth as we've worked through the process. There's a little bit of information about the properties they have. They have, you know, almost five, just a little over $5 billion in assets under management with over 60 properties. They're based in Athens, Georgia, but they do work all over the country. The site itself, really, I think, is kind of divided into this half-block parcel, as I've already talked about, with fronting, the bulk of it fronting on Main Street. As Jeff's report kind of alluded to, in 2015, there was a change in the zoning that effectively took it from D1 to D2 and allowed for a tower element to be placed at the corner with a lower-scale element kind of following the rest of the property on the site. Basically, we're meeting those two different requirements, 120 feet and 60 feet for the maximum height. And we tried to find a way to work the architecture so that it would break it up along some of the longer facades, which, for the most part, really are the Main Street facade. The project, from a parking perspective and kind of thinking through what happens from the first-floor perspective, as you see here, is all of the kind of elements that have to do with parking are kind of basically located in the back of the building, on the alley. And then on the three street fronts, there's effectively active architecture, whether it's retail housing or lobbies. They're really located on those floors, or I mean, on that level, and they reinforce that street front. We then tried to return the retail and some of those uses as much into the alley as we could so that that kind of hard corner would soften up with some activity. The parking has two access points to it. They are pretty much as far north and as far south. And what happens is the parking stacks on two levels, and we're trying to get you in at two different points. Main reason is so that the traffic is kind of pushed as far away from each other on the alley itself when there's ingress and egress going in and out of the parking structure. Just kind of walks you through that. As you go up, you effectively get to a level that has this amenity level, which is located on it. I'll talk a little bit about that. And then as we go up even further, it turns into the tower element. The tower element's somewhat of a U-shaped building, but from the street front, I think it has a presence of kind of a larger, taller building. And that really takes us into then the courtyard amenities, which are located in two of those little crevices. The first one basically looks to the alley side and is somewhat of an overlook that looks to the east. And as we go through some of those amenities that are located in those, they also reoccur. And I'm trying to go through these fast, you can ask me any questions, but the time is limited. Then the main amenity deck, which has a small whirlpool, I mean, hot tub pool located on it, is located on the actual Main Street side, so it actually looks to the west. And the other one actually peaked to the east. And that has several different amenities, but mainly areas for the residents to have a place to kind of meet and greet that's outside. Can be anywhere from hanging out in hammocks to playing ping pong. All of that is kind of recessed very far back. We've done trees. You can see three trees on either side of a trellis element. They're actually what you'd probably see a little bit from the street side. So there, you're getting a view looking out towards the street. Another view of that. Try to conceal basically the activities, kind of for the benefit of everybody. I'll let Scott really quickly run through any questions he has, and then I'll be more than happy to jump into the architecture. But why don't you first take it on the civil side, Scott?
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Betzel with Midwestern Consulting. We're the civil engineers and surveyors for this site plan and new project, exciting new project. Usually, I have a bigger role in projects, but this is really a very urban type of a project where the building is the big show and filling pretty much the entire site. The site itself is 1.16 acres. As you're aware, there's an existing building there that would be removed. That was built in 1982, and it's about 64,000 square feet of office space on three stories. It has a garden level and then two stories above ground. Currently, there's no stormwater management at the site. It wasn't required at the time. And there's about 41 spaces of surface parking right now. There's no natural features on this site that are, at all, that will be removed or that even exist. Street trees are the only real vegetation. Some will be removed on Packard, some will be retained. Utilities is really, we're very fortunate in this case. We have new utilities that surround the site. There's no offsite utilities that would be required. So we're going to be removing some existing old leads that extend out into Main Street and to Packard that will get Band-Aid treatment. The perimeter around all sides, Packard, Main, Williams, and the alley, will at least with one lane immediately surrounded and additional curb be milled and resurfaced at the completion of the project. We will be providing stormwater management in the form of underground detention to today's standards. And traffic, they will be generating some traffic, but when you look at traffic, you have to look at what's there existing as well. So existing right now, this office has a capacity to house 160 to 180 employees, who are probably most, most all commuters. The type of lifestyle that is going to be enjoyed by most of the people that live here, we expect to see a lot of people with limited vehicles. And so we're providing 102 spaces, 90 on the two decks, and then some surface parking in the rear. We don't expect to see, and the city staff concurs, any real demonstrated change in traffic. And it actually may even be lighter during the peak hour periods because of the type of clientele that this building may have versus the type that commute in every day at 8:00 and leave at 5:00 every day. So traffic has not been an issue. As I said, the city has approved our plan. We evaluated, we expect a lot of pedestrian movement, so we spent a lot of time, really for the first time in my career, doing a full-blown pedestrian mobility type of investigation, looking at crosswalk timing of all things. Like, is it going to be enough for the additional people that are here? There's going to be some over 400 beds, and those people, and presumably migrating in various directions, predominantly, probably two directions. So we took a good look at that, and we had some suggestions for some minor crosswalk signalization adjustments. And I think the city has taken those and probably just evaluate those on a wait-and-see type of a basis. Landscaping, as you've probably seen, is really limited to street trees. We have a little less than a dozen new street trees and raised-bed planters and cast iron surface grates. Big improvement will be the streetscape along William Street. We've pulled the building back an additional, how many feet?
Seven.
Seven and a half feet to allow for 16 feet clear. That would afford the ability to have some sidewalk café and just more room for pedestrians. Obviously, there's probably going to be some more pedestrian activity at this corner than there has been in the past since this office building has existed. So that's a big improvement. I don't know. I think we're pretty happy with this project. We think that it's a nice benefit to downtown Ann Arbor. We'll be adding the sidewalk on Williams to enhance the streetscape, providing stormwater management that doesn't exist right now, enhancing the alleyway in the back with landscaping and resurfacing. And obviously, you've heard the lead benefits solar and affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, do you have a snap report for us?
Just wanted to add a few of the details. As was mentioned, 218 dwelling units are proposed, which includes 421 bedrooms of a variety of types, studios, 1, 2, 3s, and 4 bedrooms. As Scott mentioned, 90 of the parking spaces are proposed to be below structure. We're also seeing a total of 84 bicycle parking spaces proposed, and about 6,500 square feet of ground floor retail that will front along William. I also want to point it out that the petitioner is getting 200% of their floor area from the standard allowable floor area for the D2. The residential area allows premiums to add another 75% of that. A green building premium allows some additional square footage, and an affordable housing premium for two dwelling units will add an additional 6,000 square feet of floor area. I do want to make mention that the petitioner has attended the Design Review Board on a number of occasions. On December 19th, 2018, the petitioner presented their initial project and received a number of comments. Since then, the petitioner has hired Mayewski Architects from Chicago, who came up with a different concept. They attempted to break up the facade into smaller components and revised the facade along South Main Street to remove some of the cave-like structures, completely revised the facade along Packard so that it's now parallel with the sidewalk. And additionally, the revised plan used building materials that are consistent with city code, such as brick, metal, and glass. The petitioner presented revised plans to the DRB on November 13th and received comment. The petitioner addressed many of the comments that had been provided by enlarging window openings, creating greater window contrast, creating more symmetrical window patterning, agreeing to provide opportunities for public art, and working with us on color. The petitioner did agree to work with us to accommodate public art in potentially a number of locations. And I do want to emphasize something that was very important to us. The petitioner agreed to shift the building 7.5 feet south from William Street to accommodate a 16-foot-wide sidewalk. That was a really big deal for staff, which wanted to accommodate pedestrians, landscaping, and doors that might be opening up, as well as potential for outdoor cafés, to create a very special place. And the petitioner agreed to accommodate that, which was a big deal and a big change for them. So we do want to thank them for that. Staff recommends approval of the site plan because it complies with all applicable local, state, and federal ordinances, standards, and regulations. It will not cause a public or private nuisance and will not have a detrimental effect on public health, safety, and welfare.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing on this item. Members of the audience can address the Planning Commission for up to three minutes. Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the commission.
My name's Ethel Potts at 1939 Jackson Avenue. I attended and I spoke at some of the public meetings, at least one of the public meetings on this development, Baccalwes, and some of the, a fair number of the neighbors were also present. But nothing has been improved in this, as far as I can tell. The only car access to this big building is still the alley, which is shared with the residents of the historic neighborhood across the alley. These are historic residential homes. Accessing the 102 parking spaces in the proposed building, which is off of a 16-to-18-foot-wide alley, this won't work. alley, this won't work. Garbage trucks are now planned to be added to the cars, the delivery trucks, moving vans, and these will all block the neighbors with their access to their garages and their backyards. This will really block the, they will really block the alley if they back up or try to turn around. This development has three major streets on three sides, but is proposing for an alley as the only access, car access to the building. This D2, there is a D2 zoning character area overlay for this, for Main Street, and this requires the proposed building to be no less than 30 feet from residential zoning. The historic district residential zoning is only the width of the alley away, only about 18 feet, which violates this code. Also, considering the frontage of these three major streets, Main, Packard, and William, the number of trees being proposed is quite measly. Why don't you want more trees along these important streets? And out of 218 dwelling units, only two are proposed as affordable. Why don't you want more affordable units?
Thank you.
My name is Piotr Mikulowski. I live at 51 South Fourth Avenue, and I will be looking at this on an everyday basis. And there are many wonderful things about this design, and I don't want to question any of that. I would like to just continue what Ms. Potts said about the alleyway. I think that this is a disaster. I sent out a note, so I'll be very brief. It seems to me that, I looked at the traffic evaluation, it said nothing about the main issues, which is that the entrance on one side is now on a street that only has two single lanes and a bicycle path, because the bicycle path was not planned at the time that this was planned. There are no-turn lanes on East William, and it's right opposite the entrance to the Fourth Street Garage. It's a disaster in the making. Right now, the street is backing up because there are no-turn lanes. And the other thing is, and on the other side is Packard, which, if you live in the area, you know, almost every day, just around the place where this comes out, is filled with fire trucks and ambulances going to Baker Commons, because there are emergencies there sometimes twice a day. So, and there are other issues. It seems to me that having just an entryway and exit on sides into an alleyway in the back is a disaster. There are going to be Ubers going in and out. You say there are only going to be a few cars. First of all, I think you underestimate the number of people who will still own cars, but let's say that most of these kids don't have cars. There are going to be Ubers going in and out. There are going to be pizza deliveries all hours of the night, all of this, right under the noses of the people who live on the other side of the alley, but also creating all sorts of confusion and I have a feeling, a lot of danger for pedestrians. So I wish that this were rethought in light of what's going on. And please take a look at East William right now with this, with the single, two single lanes with no turns onto Main Street. It's blocking up even, you know, on a normal day. What's going to happen during rush hour? There's still going to be people living there who are going to be going in and out, but there are also going to be delivery trucks. Look at what's happened at that big building on Huron, where one lane of Huron is always blocked by delivery trucks and so forth. So please consider that. There are also going to be trucks blocking the alleyway that deliver things to the beer vault, et cetera. So I think that this is the making of a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Crockett. I live at 506 East Kingsley. I have been to every single meeting about this building, and there has been progress made, but it still could be better. It is a dismal gray amidst some beautiful, warm brick buildings. I was hoping that at this noteworthy corner, the designers of the building could come up with something which is more in keeping with the spirit of Ann Arbor. This is not. It's ugly. The color is ugly, and I hope that that can be changed. I too share the misgivings about fewer cars being used. This is a student dormitory. While it may be true that students will move here and possibly walk to classes and walk elsewhere because they are within walking distance, that's no guarantee. However, the big problem is that there will be a multitude of deliveries and pickups. I live near the corner of Huron and State Street and Division in the old Fourth Ward Historic District. Huron is impassable, impassable, every morning and every evening because no one ever factored in what would happen with all of the deliveries, all of the Ubers, all of the lifts, and all of the other incoming and outgoing traffic from the huge student residences in that block on Huron from State to Division. You cannot get through. I'm usually on foot when I'm downtown. There are some rare occasions where I've been in a car in the evening, and it takes forever just to go around the block. This is a big problem, and already we are setting ourselves up for a huge problem at this intersection, which is already more heavily trafficked than the area close to my neighborhood. I went to the design review meeting, and there was a lot of talk about public art. I'm glad to hear that there is mention of it tonight, but we still haven't seen anything. This building really cries out for something to make it beautiful. Public art is that opportunity. I don't know what it is, and we still don't see it tonight. John Kotarski, who was a new appointee to the design review board, especially emphasized this. So I hope that public art is definitely a part of this design. This is really important in terms of activating the alleyway. That alleyway could be very dangerous. Public art could mitigate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the planning commission in regards to this petition? Seeing no one, oh, come on up.
I'm Deanna Royer. I live at 541 South Fourth Avenue. My concerns have been covered tonight, but I would like to know why there are only two affordable units when the city is looking to do affordable housing, take away parking and carry town, et cetera. We need more of those, and I don't know how that all works, but how about four? And it really, I hope that people go over there at William and Fourth and watch the buses trying to turn into the, into the station and the bike lane, which is a nice idea, but it's going to wreak havoc. It already has. I had to back up in order to let a bus turn a corner at William and Fifth just yesterday. Anyway, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to do this tonight. Karen White, 2719 Cranbrook. But I have two daughters who are in the prime market for this kind of housing. One who have, one who lived at the place at the corner of Huron and Division, which indeed is as miserable as everybody has been saying. It's even more miserable if you're trying to move a kid in and out. There's no place to park a van. There's no place to load. I'm going to suggest that the kids who are going to live in this kind of building could just as easily recreate on the roof and that you could do a drive right through the middle of this behemoth with four lanes so that there were places for people to park underneath, you know, essentially just a first-floor arch. And the building can join up above it, but you've got to give some place for lots of vehicles to stand and pick up people and idle and load. And I don't see any of that in there right now, so thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the planning commission in regards to this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and I will read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commissioner hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve the standard at Ann Arbor Site Plan and Development Agreement. Do you have a commissioner who will move? Move by Commissioner Survey, seconded by Commissioner Ackerman. We are in discussion. Commissioner Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the neighbors who have come out to the developer for all the revisions, and of course, to staff for the review. I guess first I want to say, appreciate all the time and diligence that's gone into revising this plan over the years now. I think this, the initial plan set off a lot more flags than kind of my sense of the neighborhood's position now, which I think is a sign of your diligence and changing architects mid-course, I'm sure is not cheap, but appreciated. I think I'm also encouraged by the mix of unit types in the building. It's reassuring to see that, you know, nearly 60% are 2-bedrooms and below. You know, over the course of the last 10 years, we've seen the mode of construction being, you know, 3, 4, 5, 6-bedroom units, which really cater to a specific audience, which is students. I think this has the opportunity to serve a much more diverse audience by age. I think something that I hear from the community is, for those who don't mind development but don't necessarily like the kind of development we see downtown is, great, a lot of construction for students. Where can I downsize as an empty nester? Where can my kid move back to town and find housing to live here and work here? So that's encouraging. The, I want to turn to the building design first. I'm glad to see, you know, two pieces of, you know, regulatory, you know, legislation working their way into reality now. First, the 2015 rezoning, I think that was wise and prudent, and also the building materials. I think the materials we're getting here are much better, all of which have been, you know, changed and amended since 2015. I think the five-story and 16 feet down on the south side of this is much, much improved from the potential 12-story that you would see across the board. And I know that it, as that was working out, it changed the sale price of the property as well. The rumors that were, you know, circulating about how much this property sold for were astonishing before, I think, some of those realities caught back up. I want to first ask about the coloring. We had a, you know, resident bring that up tonight, and I think that's something that stands out to me as well. Could you, could the architect maybe talk us through the palette, how it was selected, and I guess why it's defensible?
Absolutely. I think, you know, just first of all, what I can do is kind of pass around the materials so everybody can get a sense. I mean, for the most part, although the renderings show one thing, I think the real materials are usually very helpful. The glass is kind of very typical glass that you would see. It's going to be reflective, but it generally takes on a character that's going to have something very close to this, which is slightly green. It's basically just clear glass. The frames and the storefront and the curtain wall and the windows, which this building has all of, which is very important to point out, it's not an inexpensive facade with the materials that are used, will be a dark bronzed metal like you're seeing here. And where you do see a light surface or a colored surface, it's probably either the off-white or the slightly bluish-gray that you see with this color, which really occurs kind of at the corner elements, where it wraps around, and then also at some of the entry elements. A large percentage of the building is then this color, the lighter color that we see of brick, or what we'd see at the very bottom of the building, which is a darker brick. And where the building has evolved from is it probably was like the polar opposite of this before, where it was very dark and had lighter elements within it. And one of the reactions that we got from several of the community members clearly was that it was too dark. And when it was too dark, I think there was, there was a request that we introduce a color. We went through probably six different variations of submitting different things. We did work with staff in some of those inter-middle stages where we also then went to a scheme that kind of went a little more earth tone and got to be a little more tan. And that generally wasn't well-received because, and that was very helpful for us. We could see where there are other buildings in the city that had done something else. And at that point, it almost just gets to be a bland building, and I think that was kind of some of the concern. And then several of the people that came to the neighborhood meeting had asked us to really go with vibrant colors. I don't mean that negatively, but just to really try to punch it out and to give it some color. And we did look at that, and that ranged from being a lot of reds to oranges to greens, and it just seemed like way too much. And so where we settled was kind of on this softer, bluer gray. I mean, I don't consider this a gray. It does have a little bit of blue. You could say it has a little lavender. We settled on that because that actually is a color that Landmark has used on other buildings very successfully in other cities. So it's, it's not a trademark to them, but it is a color that they like to use on their projects. And after going through these different sequences, honestly, although that doesn't necessarily please everybody, it seemed to please all of us from the design perspective, that we were getting a nice overall palette. That worked, and there were several neighbors who were very happy with it as well. But I clearly understand that. I don't think there is a perfect answer, to be honest with you.
No, I think that's fair. I think ultimately, it's going to be fairly subjective, and I don't care to be the judge of that. I guess it would be helpful to get a sense of how much engagement of the neighbors there was, you know, focus grouping or just input about the color palette. Was this devised, you know, by Landmark in consultation with staff, which is a very different output than in consultation with neighbors?
It was done in consultation with, first it was with the neighbors, and then we went through staff to see if we thought that that might work. And then we got feedback from the neighbors that they weren't necessarily still happy with it. And I think Chris is probably the best representative from that perspective. She was very outspoken, and I understand her perspective 100%, and we've certainly tried to address it. You know, initially where we started is, there was a feeling it was super dark, and there just wasn't a need for another dark building. And it is a confusing process because some of the neighbors who came out who didn't want it to be dark then found out that we had done the hub building, and they didn't think that was dark, but that was close to what we had. So it's always hard to find that right balance. I think a real building versus a rendering is something completely different. And once you have a chance, this is our job. This is what we do. This is what we take great pride in. We're trying to find that perfect balance, but in the end, it really comes down to the way that we kind of detail it together. So absolutely, there was involvement back and forth, and we shared these drawings back and forth, but I'm not here to say that I believe Chris is happy with where we ended up.
Fair enough. Okay. And I'd be, actually, can you hold up the brick again? Is that the full depth or is that just a sample?
These are, these are the full-size bricks. These are just, they're normal-sized bricks. We're not doing jumbo bricks or anything strange.
And the depth of it, is it just paneling or is it a full?
It's a full-depth brick up above that are applied on a panel with a mortar joint. The first two stories are a regular bedded true brick like you see here on the wall.
Okay. And then I'll leave it, I'm curious, a question for the architects on the commission about the dark color at ground level and kind of how does that, you know, create a welcoming or, you know, open pedestrian experience? So a question to you all if you care to answer later. I, on the parking, I see... I, on the parking, I see, I do see this as a net benefit. If this is just 102 cars, that's better than the number of commuters currently on the lot. So I do see it as a net benefit. I had a question about the EVs. Are there any incentives to putting EVs? Do they count as a greater number of spaces? Or is there any material advantage in including EV?
Shared parking is incentivized, because they can count additional parking spaces toward meeting their requirement, but currently not EV spaces.
Okay. I think that is a good one for us to take a look at as well. And then is the rest of the structure wired for EV? Should the sweeping revolution come?
Yes, yes. I mean, I think we worked with Landmark to find that right balance. So the four is really what they think they need now, but we are actually putting the infrastructure in within the electrical to provide for it in the future. We just honestly don't know where to run it. So we don't want to just run the conduit to some random place. We'd rather have the ability to leave that future be there. So we're future-proofing it by having the ability to tap into the panels to be able to do it, and have it at both levels on the parking structure.
Cool. Well, while we're talking about electrical infrastructure, the solar paneling. I couldn't find the plan for the roof in the site plan. Was that provided? Did anyone else find that?
I don't know if that was, was that in the middle? Josh, yeah, I think it should be in there. Do we have it in?
Do you know which sheet?
It would be on the architectural plans.
Oh, okay. So in our packet, what would that be under?
There's no roof.
You didn't see it either? Okay. I think, so, okay, something that... First, first page. First, first page.
Yeah, right there.
So the north, this corner is the little panel.
So 1% of annual energy consumption is going to come from this northeast corner of the building. Can you talk through, I mean, that's a small amount of surface area, providing, you know, a small amount of your electrical consumption. Can you talk through any interest in expanding that?
Well, I think in the area that's shown right now is the smallest we can make it to achieve the 1%. It actually could fluctuate up to twice that size, depending on which photovoltaic panel we actually end up going with. So we're trying to leave a little bit of wiggle room with that. And for us, the real issue is, we need a good majority of this roof for the mechanical units. We haven't shown that up there. And that's predominantly where our problem comes in. We have limited surface to put it. On the lower-level roof, we can't place it because it can't project above the 60-foot height limit. It's a unique problem in Ann Arbor. This actually is a very unique building. The fifth floor, you can't get to with an elevator from one of our lobbies. We're very lucky in that there's a tower next to it, so that that elevator could get to it. Because, you know, Ann Arbor kind of has this 60-foot, whatever their height is, is a glass ceiling that nothing can kind of go through. And you could say, well, just push your building down, but it's already a five-story building and 60 feet. That's a pretty reasonable expectation.
Right. No, I think that's...
We have put a conduit in, and we would future-proof two different places for the lower roof should Ann Arbor revise its rules, which we understand might possibly happen.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's another item that we need to take a look at, is waiving solar panels as being considered part of height, because it seems like we're just kicking ourselves. I see a couple other commissioners itching to ask questions. So I'll leave it there. My, other areas of concern around alley and access, and then some questions around art and parks, but I want to share the four, so.
And just on the 1%, too, I would just add that the whole idea of sustainability, since, you know, somebody had mentioned that it doesn't have the greater number of affordable units that is currently going to be required, that's because this project had already been started before that was passed. But it does include lead silver, which is something that you might not get if you chose the affordable option. So it's a give and take, and so I imagine there's people who are on different sides of it. Just as the solar is, the solar is a great thing to focus on, but to achieve lead silver, which is not easy. Certified is pretty reasonable for residential building, but silver is not easy for a building like this. It's all a matter of us deciding which points we're going to go after. And unfortunately, solar is not that beneficial when it comes to lead, the way the point structure is. It's a crazy number to get that next level. And so we know that solar is important. We want to include it. We want to have the ability to do it. Every day it gets better, and we understand that. And it's great that Landmark would be an owner that intends to hang on to the property, because that's the best case to find somebody who could believe in a payback.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mills.
Thanks. And I'll just start by addressing the two things that you brought up, Commissioner Ackerman, which were about electric vehicle and what our code calls for, and the height limit associated with solar, and whether those count towards the overall height. And those were two of the things that we talked about at the ordinance revisions committee meeting in November. So there are things in the works. And actually, Mr. Khan is working on both of them, so that's great. And so I think it's really important that you do have conduit, particularly on the 60-foot roof. Is there anything else going on there, then? No, because our code doesn't allow it to go on. So there's no mechanicals there. So that is, and it's actually on the south side of your building, not shaded by the tower. So that is exactly where we would want solar panels. I understand we can't ask you, you know, it's not allowed in our code right now. I think, I think it's super wise to put conduit there, because I fully expected that's something that our body will take up very soon. On the EV infrastructure, again, predominantly pulling from the information that was shared among ORC, and so I know that that's less than half of the planning commission. But you're well aware of like the costs of building it in from the get-go versus, right? So running the conduits so that you have some flexibility, even if you don't put the wires in that conduit, right? That is something, you know, the existing building, it's sad to say that it's 1982, which isn't that old, right? I mean, that's a short life for a building. This building, I would expect to be there much longer. And so in, even in 40 years, like, I would fully expect that the people that are parking their cars there are going to want access to EV charging. And so making that in there now, I think, is very wise. Let's see. I appreciate that you talked through premiums, because you did use a range of the existing premiums to get there. So that was one of the things that I thought I would address, just in terms of how you get to almost 400% FAR, which again, given the location of this, I applaud you for getting as much FAR as you possibly could, and by using those combinations of premiums. So, so under the old premiums that are no longer in effect, but this was taken place before there, just in case you're in the audience or on TV and care about this, there's premium floor area that's awarded for being residential, which that in itself is no longer viable. There's premium floor area awarded for being especially sustainable. This is the, this is the LEED certification. And then for the affordable housing. And so the, even the solely, like the sustainability aspect, that, if I'm not mistaken, that no longer is one of the premiums that's available. So I appreciate that that's part of this. Am I wrong about that? Okay. So, the, I'm curious about where that public art might go? Like, what the discussion has been around that? Because I think that that certainly is one way to liven up the building. I am okay with the color palette. I think, I won't be the only person to say, it's great that it's not brown. But I'm wondering where you're thinking of public art and what the process is for that in your minds?
Hi, Eric Lee, Landmark Properties. So we've actually engaged with the Ann Arbor Art Center to help us manage a, like, process that will involve local artists to Ann Arbor to pick an art piece that will go on this building. Where we are anticipating putting the artwork now is actually at the corner of Packard and the alley. There is an open green space there, and we are envisioning putting a 3D sculpture-type piece of artwork there. That is driven by comments both from the design review board, and meetings with the neighbors, and from meetings with the Ann Arbor Art Center themselves. You know, we explored several different options, but we thought that corner would be a great place to put something to kind of liven up the building and, you know, access from that area. So we, we have been, we've had several meetings with the Ann Arbor Art Center already, and are in the process of executing an agreement with them to help us manage that process, because we're not local to Ann Arbor. We thought it was very important to have a local group help us navigate that process with the local community.
Got it. So the public art is anticipated not necessarily to be something wall-mounted, since you're talking about that particular corner? Or it could be on the wall in that, that triangle?
It could be. We're still kind of exploring that. It could also be kind of a pedestal mounted, or, you know, a pedestal sculpture as well.
Got it. Okay. It's good to see that those plans are like more than half-baked. Like, it's not just lip service that they're moving forward. I appreciate that. I'm not the public art person, so I appreciate that. Let's see. So I want to talk about bike parking and some of the pedestrian stuff. That's what I often talk about. And I, first of all, I want to say thank you for all of the additional on-street, like, Class C bicycle parking, because I regularly find it difficult to figure out where to park my bike on South Main. It's usually my bike chained to like a street lamp or light lamppost there. So I think having all that, particularly that you're adding retail and having those, having the bike hoops on the street, I think is going to be a great addition. Thank you for going above and beyond the minimum required there. For the, for the required parking that you have inside, the, first of all, the location of the whatever's off of Main Street, right next to the front entrance, which I, what I take as the front entrance, I think is really, really great. What I'm wondering is why there's not a door on the inside as well, so that you don't have, it looks like there's a ramp that goes down. And so I just don't know what, it seems like there's grade change, but I would just say that would make it, you're so close to being like my ideal bike parking location, if you could just go farther. I don't know if you want to address that.
I'm going to have to turn that over.
Yeah, yeah. I figured that that's like tag team to the architect.
It's really only that we would lose spaces. It comes down to that. To put another door in, it just would wipe out a few bikes in that room.
It looks like there's bikes on either side. It's more like the east wall. There, it looks like there's nothing on the east wall.
Yeah.
There's just a grade change, so you're going down the ramps, you're not at the correct elevation to access the bike parking.
Got it.
If you took the ones in the top right corner and turned them 90, those three against the wall, there might be...
Yeah, we need to have another ramp.
I bet there's a little sketchy. But if you maneuver the ones on the right side, you know, and turn them to go onto that east wall, there might be a way to get the door on the south wall.
Right. So I mean, if...
If there's a way to do it, I think it's really... I don't want a bike room to be unused, right? That's like your, you don't want that either. So, I mean, if this is what you've seen elsewhere, I'm just thinking like, maybe I'm channeling the first apartment that I had in DC, which had, you know, you walked in, but then you could continue on on the other side. Anyway, it seemed like there was an opportunity to get right from there to the elevators rather than walk back outside. I really like the access from the, that is literally the front door. I think that that is fantastic. I think it sends exactly the sort of message that we want to be sending, which is like, these are the kind of people that we want living in this building, right? That aren't going to be using the alley, like, for their cars, they're going to be bringing their bikes. So I think that that's fantastic. It was just, I thought that that was potentially the missed opportunity. And then I'm confused on the one that's in the parking garage, how you actually get, are you sneaking between the two compact parking spaces to get to it? This is on, I think, the lower level?
Correct, yeah, there's a, there's a corner. I mean, there's still enough room to, it's really small here. So, yeah, I mean, there's such a, there's a five-foot wide path that you could access that. But you can go directly, the basement's not truly a basement, it's actually only a couple feet below grade. So you can actually go through the front lobby to get to that area. So, because the basement's at, there's like five feet of grade change across the site. So that lower level's only a couple feet down from grade. So that ramp that takes you down from off of the lobby takes you essentially to the elevation of that parking area.
Okay, so I'm looking at, yeah, I think I'm looking at the same one that you have here. This is the level that has like the mailroom on it, right? And you've got the stairway in the middle. So you're telling me that there, maybe I'm just seeing solid walls, but you're telling me that you could actually...
The plan's kind of cut funny, but essentially, yes, you can, from grade, you can reach that whole back area, the parking, the vehicular parking and the bike parking area.
Okay.
Off of grade, which is what that ramp off of the lobby takes you to.
Now I'm seeing, now I'm seeing how they hook up. Okay, got it. And there's nothing from, but there's no access, I mean, honestly, most of the people that are coming on bike are probably going to be the people that are trying to zip to like the east side of Main Campus potentially, or somewhere else, or North Campus or something. There's nothing, there's no entrance for them to get to that on the east side of the building? Is that right?
Well, they could get to it actually through the parking garage itself.
Okay. Either they come up that ramp.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, got it. And on, on the level that's showing where the lobby is, not this one, I think, it's the one where you're showing the up-ramp to the parking level, there's something just north of the compact spaces marked 30 spaces. Is that like storage units or something?
You're saying right here?
Yeah. Or what is that?
That's an additional bike parking room.
Got it.
So that's bike parking off of the alley.
Yeah, so that's...
And then from there, there's a ramp that gets you up into your elevator lobby.
Got it.
It seems to all of us this is a flat site, but it really isn't.
There's a lot of movement.
It's so big, there's a lot going.
Okay. So you actually have three bike rooms? Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. So this is the big one, and right outside of that door is where you can get, you can go by the generator?
Correct. Generator, and then there is that existing transformer for DTE, that's that kind of oval shape that's sitting there.
But people, but this will be something that residents can access that door?
Absolutely, yes.
Because that's where they're going to access it, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. That is awes- that's, that was my like dream scenario of how to make that work. So I appreciate this. Like, one of the, again, I hate to see things that we require because we think it's good for people, but then they, it doesn't get used because it's valuable space. I think you've put this in places where people want to use it. And so I really appreciate that. Good, good work. Now I want to talk about Uber and Lyft and Amazon, right? And delivery trucks. Because the addresses, particularly that Uber is going to be given are off of Main, right? They're not necessarily off the alley. So what's your plan for that?
Well, I think initially, and it's a good time to point out, if you look at this plan that's up there, there is that red line that goes across. And earlier, one of the citizens had said that we weren't setting back the building from the alley, but we actually are. So there is no building to the east of that red line. What is east of that red line is a parking space for Amazon to basically be able to locate, and additional parking spaces. And that's the area that we intend, as well as some of the shared vehicle spaces. That's the area that we intend to be relatively active, but it was something that was requested of us to provide an area. It's not required, but to provide that area for Amazon or UPS to be able to park their vehicle. So it's tough, because if we provide it, some people get concerned that we've provided it. You know, now that we're providing something else off of the alley, but we're at least giving a place for the vehicles to go off of the alley. We know that some of the concern that neighbors had on the alley itself was this concentration of 100 parking spaces. I mean, that, so the best thing we could do, and that's what really changed, is we switched it so that it's 50, it's on two different levels, two different in-and-out points, two different opportunities. I think if you're coming from the, from the right of this plan, you're probably going to go south. If you're coming from the northern side of this, there's a chance you might go north, but if somebody's in the alley, you always have a choice to go back and forth. The alley itself is a benefit, and it's a wonderful thing to have. And I understand the neighbors' concern, that they feel like there's going to be a lot of added traffic. We, and through the traffic study, actually feel like it's going to be better, because there isn't this concentration of traffic. And it's residents, and so they really come and go at very different times. And even the residents that are going to live here are going to have all different kinds of schedules. So... So, part of that was to give more breadth to the alley by widening it. That was required by the setback. We've pushed the building back yet, I think, another 20 feet, even further than that with smaller little points that do stick out, like the way to get out of the garage and some other different elements. And then we have provided those different things. We think we can actually solve it for Amazon and UPS, that that probably isn't going to be the issue. We think that with Uber and Lyft, it's very hard. They're not as trainable, so we have to be honest with you and say, we've provided it, but we don't know if there's absolutely a perfect solution to that.
Yeah. I think that that's a, I think that there's still going to be the Uber-Lift problem, whether it's on William or on Main. I mean, honestly, if it's on Packard, I understand that there's a lot of emergency vehicles on Packard.
Yeah.
But there's just a lot less traffic particularly there, so like, I'm not so worried about that being blocked.
Right.
I, yeah. I, this is a place where I think our code needs to do better in terms of figuring out, in terms of requiring this or better planning about where curbside pickup, drop-off things happen. That's not something that our code currently talks about, and I, you'll be hearing from me at the Commissioner Proposed Business at the end to add that to our list.
It's tricky because this is a very unique site in that we don't have any parking on three sides of it.
Which, and I think to your point, like using the benefit is, I mean, that is such, this is going to be a really great block to walk on because you don't have to worry about any curb cuts. I think that that's, I think that that's really fantastic. I, but I also think that there's some people, that there's some sorts of things that are not trainable, and this is one of them.
Right.
And so--
And I think one of the citizens had a great point about why aren't we sending the traffic out on one of those other three streets? And Packard and Williams would be a traffic person's nightmare because they're not that long, so to send a traffic vehicle out that close to an alley would never be something that would make sense. And then to send it out in the middle of Main Street, just from an urban planning perspective, would really ruin the potential for Main Street.
Move-in, move-out, are you, where are you anticipating that? Because move-in, move-out tends to be concentrated in a very short time period.
Right.
Right? So, that loading zone isn't going to fit multiple moving vans?
There's actually a kind of a staging plan for all of the spaces across the back because at those move-in and move-out points, Landmark currently doesn't even feel like they're going to need these parking spaces. They need some, but they don't feel like they're going to need the full number. So, the ability to have our loading zone, having the shared parking spaces, and then using those other outdoor parking spaces on a temporary basis where we don't have to petition the city or anything for a space is really where the move-in and move-out operation would happen. We also have another loading area, which happens to be where our gas pickup is, where you were talking about where the vehicles go in and out. So, we would plan to use all of those areas for that process, and all of them are accessible to the elevators and to the, to the building.
Got it. And just to get you guys to say that, then, if Landmark doesn't think they need all these spaces, the reason that you're providing them is because our code requires it?
Correct.
And I know, like, you're providing one additional space than what is required. That's it?
Yes.
Which is not necessarily the com, that, I think, matching it. And also, again, that it's screened from the street, but that you do have spaces, like you say, here particularly, the surface spaces that can be used for those vehicles. I think that that's really helpful in kind of noting that and that how those spaces will be used more for that kind, those drop-off things was not immediately apparent to me, so that's helpful information to have. I, yeah. I'm done. Thanks.
Commissioner Woods?
Just wanted to mention a couple of things. First of all, so I, from the comments we got earlier, I'm not sure that the folks who live in the historic district to the east or other neighbors are yet convinced that there aren't going to be some impacts to them by this increased traffic from the alley. And so, I'm not sure what else can be done to work on that, but certainly just to be open to that. Now, is the, is the alley already paved or is it going to be paved, repaved?
The alley is already paved.
Okay.
And anything that would need to be paved would just be a part of the process.
Okay. All righty. The other thing I just wanted to mention was I, I think we, we all want to look at whether or not we're going to have opportunities for increased solar panels and things like that, but I think we should be cautious because the height limits on that building, I remember that there was a lot of discussion about that, and there would indeed be a lot more discussion, even though solar panels are certainly something that might be important, yet if they do increase the height of the building, I think, then you will have perhaps some neighbors who would, again, come out with concerns. So, just to keep that in mind, I think the, this building was, or this space has certainly had a lot of attention, both from Planning Commission and also from the surrounding neighbors and City Council, of course, as well. And so, it does appear that there have been some compromises made, which, which means that probably not everyone's going to be happy. Personally, I like Brown, so I'm, that's a vote for Brown. I kind of, I also kind of liked the pictures that came in our packet. I was like, well, so why did you move away from some of those? Maybe it was the shading or the time of year for some of those. I don't know. Well, let's just compromise it and put up a big pink and blue building and see where we go from there. It would, you know. But I do want to say in terms of public art, I'm hoping perhaps also that you may, as you're thinking about perhaps having some café area or something on the William Street side, maybe that's an opportunity for some sort of public art possibility, possibly even just changing the kinds of things that might go there. You don't have to put it on your building, but just, you know, things which keep folks' attention. Because one of the things that we've also found is this particular part of Main Street, on this side as well as the other side, I've often heard the folks in the DDA say that it becomes dead after a certain time of day. So, it's not like putting up this big building, even with all these amenities, is going to change necessarily if there's not some lively activity and other things also being planned.
And I would point out that if you look at the Packard Street, right by Packard and the alley, that whole activation of Packard is a direct result of the request from the neighbors.
Okay.
They actually wanted that. They didn't necessarily want our amenity there, but they liked the idea of the lobby and the traffic. They liked the idea that there was an amenity that was active.
Mm-hmm.
And they kind of honestly liked the idea that that had the ability to change at some point, that it was effectively a kind of retail-type space that could evolve over time if something wanted to change, if there was a use that made sense for it.
Right. Any, any plans, as you look at your whole big block, I know you mentioned the café, but any other places where there might be any kind of seating or anything like that? I don't know, any--
Well, that's, that is the whole idea of kind of moving the building back, and we already have the 16 feet on Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
And we have more than that on Packard because there we actually have a green, you know, we have a green space, a sidewalk and a green space, and then a building.
Mm-hmm.
Where on the other two sides, it's more urban, and there we go open between some spaces, and then it's the new streetscape and planter.
Okay.
And then we have space left in between that. So, that's kind of in something we've gone back and forth with the city on to work out what that streetscape is and their recommendation. The number of trees, I think they're actually balanced pretty good. Yes, at first, they're not going to look as full, but once they do grow, I think it's pretty close to norm for where the trees would go. And then the idea is within that 16-foot space, it's really set up so that there can be outdoor activities and have seating and things that would go through the normal city approval process.
Right. Sounds good.
And then at the corner, you can see we actually set the entrances back. It's set back a little bit more than three feet, so at the corner, we even add additional space, so there's a little bit more. It's not only 16 feet on those two sides of the corner. It goes back to 19, almost 20 feet there.
Okay. So, at this point, you're not planning any giant clock on the outside of your building or anything?
No clock.
Okay. Just thought I--
Is that a request?
Yes. We could always use more clocks.
Commissioner Briggs?
Well, I'll try not to revisit some of the other comments that have already been made. With regards, regard to the street front activation, is the glass that you showed earlier, is that what the retail glass is going to look like?
Yeah, the retail glass, this has a little bit more tint to it just because it's slightly, the retail glass will be this green character, but it'll be the completely clear one.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Because I think that's one of the issues on the opposite side of the street where there wasn't sort of that--
Right.
Visibility. And then with regards to the pedestrian mobility analysis, you mentioned looking at the crosswalk timing. I don't know if a recommendation was made to staff or any, or discussions around prohibiting right turns on red. That's something that's come out of Pedestrian Access and Safety Task Force, and I believe it's still permitted there at the corner. Could you discuss that?
Scott could talk about that.
We can revisit that.
Come back to that.
We can come back to that. I hope that that is--
There is no turn on red that was installed at the corner of William and Main in the last 30 days.
Yeah, there was.
Awesome.
So, it's up.
Good. Check. With, you mentioned the courtyards earlier, and it sounds like, I mean, I can understand why there would be a desire to have not too much, you know, folks looking in on the folks in the hot tub. Looks like you're going to see some of the trees maybe, but is there an opportunity to perhaps, I mean, I think one of the nice things about courtyard is sometimes you get a little glimpse in or, you know, there's something that activates that space from, makes it interesting from the, even for the person who's on the outside. And I don't know if you were able to do that, maybe by encouraging ivy growing or something that would then also create some additional warmth to that building. Is there a way that you could add that element?
Well, I think with the planters, that is something that we absolutely could consider is just finding some way to have something climbing. Right now, the intention is basically you have trees and then a trellis, but the trellis itself could also be something that we could put climbing, a climbing, you know, type of vine or something to go and grow on.
I would encourage you to look at that. I think, I concur with some of the statements around there not being necessarily very much warmth to building. I think that there are just small little elements like that that might be able to add in a little bit to it, which then, going to the public art aspect, it sounds like you're looking for more of a signature piece on that, that one corner or something that's coming in with the partnership with the art center. But if there's opportunities to also look for just smaller pieces, just something really simple, I mean, if you think about when you walk by literati and there's the words on the wall or the little fairy doors, it's just small little things that take people by surprise. It could just, you know, that I think liven up a space. And so, I think if you can look for opportunities just to add in something of interest, it makes the building more special for everybody and for, for the community.
And I do want to point out that Landmark has been open to that. It first initially started as a particular, maybe it was a piece or where could the place be for it? And that just seemed like an opportunity that grew out of a neighborhood group, but I think what's happened with design review and everything else is I think everybody still likes that, but they like the idea that it may stretch down the alley. So, I know Landmark is completely open to it, and as with any art, we're hoping that what's selected is going to kind of blow us all away and be something we weren't anticipating. But the idea to give the artist the concept would be, this is an idea, if we could stretch this out and get the biggest impact out of it.
Yeah. I think sometimes, my impression is that we've, we've struggled with public art and signature pieces in our community. I'll just leave it there. And I also second the comments regarding the bike parking. If there's an opportunity to go through the building, that just makes it so much more pleasant to be able to go in from the front and then exit back into your home.
Mm-hmm.
That's lovely. Could you discuss, and then finally, could you discuss a little bit more the, the delivery spaces? I mean, I think obviously with the Uber and Lyft, we're going to see a fair amount of that, folks being driven to the front of the building where the address is. But I'm not, it's not clear to me what the alley side of the building looks like in terms of, it looks like there's a lobby off of the front. Is there a space off of the rear of the building that is pleasant for residents to wait there if they're waiting for a pizza?
There is.
Okay. Could you describe that more?
I mean, the building's kind of unique, first of all, because it really has two lobbies.
Okay.
There's a tower lobby, which on the drawings, if I can kind of circle this right now, where, if you can see it on your screen, there's a tower lobby which is located to the north of the Main Street access point. And then there's the lower portion lobby, which is located all the way right at the kink when we go down Packard. Then from either of those two, here, there's an access point to go in and out to the rear area, as well as the one that Josh kind of walked you through at this other rear area. The rear area across the entire back is basically landscaped, or it's parking, or it's the loading. It's this drop-off area. It's not actually a loading dock. It's actually just intended to be a drop-off area. And basically, depending on what the vehicles are that would, could fit in there, right now, it's basically set up that you could have a regular-sized UPS truck and probably a United States Postal Service truck parked there. And then there's a series of parking spaces that just run across the back until you eventually get to the shared parking spaces that we have. But what we were kind of talking about before is between all of those, there's a great opportunity for those vehicles to come in and out. I'm completely sure we can manage the Uber and, I mean, to manage the UPS and the delivery system. I don't know what's going to happen with the United States Postal Service. I don't know what they do today if they would just stop in the middle of traffic on Packard. They might, but we are giving them a place to go, and it would seem to make a great deal of sense that they would do that after a little bit of understanding and training that it would work.
Yeah, I'm not so much concerned about those, I'm thinking more of the delivery, at least being able to route some of those deliveries. I mean, I would concur that we have an issue with regards to traffic downtown that is, we have not yet figured out when it comes to new forms of mobility and delivery galore. So, to the degree that, I just wasn't sure if that back area for the residents, if that would feel like a space that they would want to wait for something?
Definitely.
Okay.
I mean, the whole idea, this whole back space, that whole stretch, almost 70% of that building is that it's either outdoor parking, a sidewalk, or landscaping that's up against the wall. So, that, that whole sector's a very, very green sector. Then we get to that big transformer that's just got brick around it that we're kind of stuck with that's existing. And then we have our loading area, which all of our stuff is inside the building. It's just wheeled out, so we don't envision that, and that was one of the things that was asked for by the neighborhood, is that we actually would cover that area. It used to be more of an open kind of courtyard, and that was beneficial to everybody, so that was always placed inside. And then eventually, when you get next to, the other issue was that we're going to have to work with the Beer Depot because they just park their trucks right now. It's just a little too convenient. The nice thing of having a property here that's going to be very well managed is they can be encouraged to kind of follow the rules on where they need to park.
Okay.
So, I don't know if it answers your question.
No, it does. I think, I just wonder if there's an opportunity to perhaps do resident education. I mean, I think some people come to this naturally where they think, oh, I'll just tell someone, you know, the delivery driver to, you know, drop this on the alley side, but if that, if there's a way that you could integrate that into the education piece to residents that when they're getting their tour, just to blatantly recommend it so they don't have to--
And there is a way. The one way that we can do with Uber and Lyft is we can work with Uber and Lyft to actually get the drop spot set in a specific spot.
Mm-hmm.
So, if they would type in the word "the standard," it might come up with that option type in the word "the standard," it might come up with that option as a drop off, just like, you know, you get strange places at the airport and different places. So we certainly can work to try to do that, to have them go through the alley.
Okay, good. And I, just, oh, and then finally, could you talk a little bit more about what it means to get lead silver? You mentioned, you know, that solar panels don't rank very high, but what, what does? Where did you get your points?
It's, it's kind of across the board. So if we, with, just Josh, just want to check, remind me, how many points do we get for the solar panels?
Across the board.
Right. So it's, and we're shooting for 60, right?
Uh, we need 50.
We need 50, but we have to shoot for 60 so that if something doesn't come through, we're usually shooting to be about five points over, and that's usually where we end up being certified. So unfortunately, that gives you an idea. And then to really, 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 really introduce a lot of the solar panels, perhaps as many as we did on Hoover and Green, which was, you know, we had a big, huge flat roof we could do it on, we would get three points. We get more points for just being in an urban area than any of those. So that's a big part of it, is basically we, we don't have these concerns for traffic. We don't have the requirements for all the extra parking. The H, the EVs, the shared vehicles are some of the places we get it. But most of the stuff actually comes through how we build the building. So for instance, there'll be recycled content, sorry, I'm not talking to you guys enough. There'll be recycled content as a big part of the construction materials that are used throughout the entire building. There are certain benefits for using different panel systems like we're using on the exterior because of the, there's not as much waste of material, and we get a better energy system. A big part of it is our envelope, so the way the whole building is kind of insulated and encapsulated. And a big part of it comes down to the use of the heating and cooling systems that we use within the building. Those are the ones that make it difficult to get anywhere above lead silver because there's just too many people interacting with the mechanical system. So that's, we've often tried to get to gold, and that's where it gets very difficult. It's much easier for a single tenant, like an office or an institutional thing. It's not impossible, but it just gets to be more difficult. So it's really that whole envelope is probably where the vast majority of the other points are coming from.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And that will be, that will be a part of what we've done. And to be honest with you, I don't think as many people took advantage of that in Ann Arbor in the past because the residential premium was such a big bonus. Many people took care of some of the aspects of being green, and we've done that on other projects. But this is actually the first that will actually be certified lead.
One other point I want to bring up on the art, and I know you've been working with the neighbors all the way along. I have to say, I was surprised, I feel like kind of a leftover polygon to me, and you're just plugging the art there. And that, from the kind of town perspective, I would rather see something on one of the corners on Main because then more people get to see it and enjoy it. And I, if I were to choose, and I could just be the queen here, I would say the corner of Main and William because it is this big divide there on William. And D2 runs for a long way. It's a long, skinny, weird dog leg in terms of the DDA. And if we're ever going to get people and businesses to start populating that long, skinny dog leg, then we have to start making fun, interesting things to be able to cross over that magic line of William because everything on the other side, north of there, is really fun, and then nobody ever crosses. And so I feel like we do need things to entice people to cross. And so I, I mean, again, you, you all have been working with neighbors. I don't want to sort of completely upend all of that. But I guess I would like to maybe insert that into the process in terms of how the neighbors think about it because I feel like that corner, we, we need to get people to cross the divide there. Because I think there are a few businesses down there, and I think there could be more. And if we can just get people to kind of get across that first obvious, you know, gap, then things like what Commissioner Richter's talking about, just ways to capture people's interest in some way, shape, or form. So I was glad, you know, from the DRB comments that, you know, you have more of a corner element and all that stuff, but it's not necessarily enough to make me want to go there and check it out. So I put that out there for what it's worth. But I do feel like in terms of kind of the structure of our downtown and where we want to go in terms of walkability and making, you know, all those, we have all those residents now kind of like way down that, at the end. And, and I think we need to kind of, so we have this kind of piece down at the end, and we have, you know, the, the part up over here. And I think we need to fill in that gap. And, and if we have things that are kind of purely residential, then there needs to be something interesting on them for people to want to kind of go across there. So again, I don't want to like upend things because I know that you have relationships and dialogues that have already been happening. But I would vote for something that, that gets people to cross the street. Otherwise, I think it's a good looking project. I like gray personally. So I think it's subjective and tough to be able to make those decisions. I like the dark on the bottom. I think it gives it like a sense of foundation, actually, for me personally. So that's, I, I think it looks good. Thank you.
Commissioner Burns.
Most of the things that I wanted to ask have already been asked, so maybe I would just second concerns about Uber and Lyft and Amazon packages, the kinds of stories that we're hearing from other similar developments that are happening downtown that I'm sure you all are aware of. And I wanted to just maybe underline the comment that came earlier during the public comment period about the two units of affordable housing. So this is maybe a comment more for the developer than for the architect. But I understand that you're not required to provide more than two units, but it seems like a kind of gesture to the community would be to provide more than that if it, if at all possible. It doesn't seem like three or four or five would produce an undue burden. So I just wanted to log that comment. Thanks.
Commissioner Hammersham.
While we're on that point, actually, and maybe this is more of a question for staff, but I was wondering why 80% or less of area median income, why it couldn't be like 60 or 65? Is there a reason we picked 80?
That, that number 80 was picked probably decades ago. And so I can't speak to what the justification was at that point in time.
So that's just the city, that's just what, when it's affordable, does it get affordable? It's designated at 80%?
That was the definition that was chosen at the time. And as I think you, you know, City Council made recent amendments that brings that number down to 60.
Yeah. Okay. But this is, we were operating under the old standards, so that's where we are. So that is why. Okay. On the, the, the Savador says there's a total of 6,000 square feet of open space on the ground level. Is that primarily along the alley? And is that just sort of like on programs? So that nice picture you showed, that first nice courtyard, that's on the second floor. That's private?
Those are raised up, so that's not included, yes.
Okay. So is it just sort of grass back there? Is there an opportunity? I guess I-
No, it's, it's landscaped. So-
It is landscaped, okay.
Yes. That, that entire area is, is going to be landscaped, including the spaces in between the parking. All of that would be landscaped.
Will there, will there be like benches or like what are you-
We weren't, we weren't planning to do any of that. That's certainly a possibility.
I don't know if alley will be a place that people will want to hang out. It seems wide enough.
Yeah.
Walking through, hanging out. Lighting, what kind of lighting is going to happen back there?
Basically, all of the lighting that we're putting on the exterior are trying, that's another point where we're trying to get points for is kind of keeping it dark skies, so it's all shooting down. We may even push some of that more into the amber range. None of it will be in the bright white, white range, which is so stark. But we're, we really have requirements where we can't exceed certain, you know, one foot candle off of the property line. So it's pretty limited. We'll have lighting that will meet code along the alleyway. So I think overall, it will be brighter. There is some public lighting there, I think on a couple of the posts, and maybe the DTE has, you know, it has that substation on the other side, and it has lighting across the back. But our intention is to light that and make it very safe.
Okay. Good.
And security is a part of the building. I didn't really run through that. But, you know, all of the entries and access points have security. The building itself has security, and it's, it's really well managed.
Okay. And just a couple more things. Oh, the, the parking spaces you have designated back there in the alley, are those going to be designated as like short-term parking? Is there any concern that like a resident that doesn't have a space in the garage would just park there long term?
Right now, the intention is just, we have the two shared vehicles, and then the rest are just numbered parking spaces that would be available. So that's what we were talking about, the flexibility about moving in. But we don't have from the flexibility of the approval process, we have one extra spot, but we don't have the flexibility on the other spots not to assign them. So our assumption is that needs to be parking, and we can't say it's a Lyft space or a place to pick up. And Jeff, you could allude to that. I assume parking is parking, and that's probably something that code's going to have to try to address as times change, you know?
That, that parking is privately controlled. It is off a public alley, but it would be up to management to determine how to regulate it.
So you'd probably not necessarily assign it. It could just be sort of flex-
Yeah, we could, well, we would assign it to the extent, but I think if we're not going to assign it and we keep a couple of spaces, then they would be, say, say it's going to be used for Lyft or Uber.
Okay.
And I think that's kind of sneaking up on all of us, and we're all trying to catch up and keep up. But it's a reality. It's not going anywhere. We, we understand.
Yeah. I mean, I guess just another for the record comment, when I read that the traffic study said that there were going to be no increased impacts, I just, I can't fully believe that. Just because, I mean, maybe just from a, you know, not many people will necessarily own cars is the hope, I think, for this. But I can just envision so many Ubers and Lifts dropping people off somewhere, maybe in the alley. My one other thing, I also love all of the bike parking, but then you get in the building, and I'm, I'm guessing, just because this is so, this is what most developments are, the elevator will be what people will primarily go to. The stairs are mostly like fire stairs. Is there any way to make them a little more attractive for people that maybe live on the second floor or the third floor to want to take the stairs? I saw that there's one in particular that is at the sort of that Packard end, and that's the lower side of the building. And it looked like there was a door from the outside that has glass, but then no windows going up.
Well, the stairs inside, we will do a good job of trying to make them attractive. That's not a question. And all of the, it's hard on this building to understand, but all of the bike spaces are effectively accessible from the outside. You just have to pick your path. And there may be a ramp or something involved. But, but you're really, to get to those, you're not going up and down. And we'll work to see if we can sneak another door in out of the third one. The other two actually think work pretty well.
If you can promise the stairs won't be typical stairs that nobody wants to take unless they're forced to. I just, I, I hate the idea of people just, you know, you live on the second or third floor, and you see the elevator, and that's just the easiest option. Like, if the stairs can just be like an easier-
Yeah, well, the stairs are basically-
Right next to the elevator, right?
Right next to it. So. And the stairs we usually do on a building like this, I'm not going to say they're, you know, paneled in wood and they're-
Well, no.
They're fire stairs, but we do usually do a really good job of trying to do the inside as something that has a nice feel to it.
Okay.
So it's, it's kind of done with sensible, durable materials.
Does there have to be a fired door, or can there be on the inside, like when it does have to be a fired door?
There does, yeah.
Maybe you can put some nice stairs on the inside. Oh, and then the one other thing regarding public art, I did notice in one of the renderings, on, there was sort of like a, like a beer depot mural on that one side. I mean, isn't that, that could actually be cool? I don't know if you're planning on doing anything on that wall, if that was just in the rendering, but-
That's actually the beer depot sign that's in front of our wall. So it's just showing up.
I thought it was like actually on your wall, but I mean-
That's our free public art. But-
Yeah. Maybe there's other opportunity on that wall for-
We have talked about the idea of having some of this art be actually attached to the wall. So, and that could be in the form of a painting or something else. So it's really good that we can get everybody's opinion. I, I don't know if we're going to get a direction, but that might be our job.
Subjective, right. In general, I, I really liked, I also really like the colors. The gray is my favorite color, so that's it.
Commissioner Sovee.
Main Street facade. So the dark is, architect is, Zach asked, I'm cool with. Talking about the units versus retail and the windows. So you alluded to different color glass. If you could just talk through that a little bit, like what Main Street residential units versus Main Street retail looks like-
Yeah.
For the neighborhood?
See if I can get to the...
Yep.
I mean, when you, so here you can see it going across that entire front. And it's, it's such a long building that I think this elevation, when you look at Main Street, probably does the best job. Obviously, when we look on the left of that, there's the tower, and we try to break the tower into a corner element, and then we have the dark brick that kind of runs across. As we do that, within all of that is actually true storefront. But then when we switch to the lower part of the building, which kind of connects across here with the trees and the trellis on the top, then we actually switch to a full-bedded lighter brick. And we actually have a more of a residential style window. It's still big because those are very tall units. It's, it's a great opportunity for somebody to get a unit that's basically got a retail height space, which is phenomenal. We are keeping the access points to the inside so that security is still solid, and we're not breaking the security for the whole building, which is really right now kind of set up to be at the two entry points. And then we transition back to the dark material until we get to the corner, which bends here. And then we have the lighter material with the storefront, and that wraps around. In those lighter material areas, we actually have storefront and curtain wall. So when we go up above, it becomes curtain wall. Curtain wall is just, you know, I'm sure you know what it is, but for everybody else, it's just a little bit more sophisticated type of glass material.
That's helpful. I just think, just clarifying that.
Yep.
That's helpful. I'm actually not too concerned about traffic and Uber and Lyft. And this comes down to kind of two points for me. Further down South Main, we see two new large housing developments that I have not had large friction with drop offs on Main Street. And seeing that Main Street between Huron and Anne with the DDA improvements, they're talking about doing the bump out. So at the courthouse, they can do a drop off, and it's a right turn only lane. The fact that we've got two lanes from Main Street going north, one is right turn only for that block, does afford an opportunity in the future for that to get reduced down to a loading zone and then right turn only halfway up that block. So I actually see potential for street traffic reengineering on Main Street to react to this. And something just has to come first. So I'm actually not too concerned with how Main Street might react. And we might see a one-lane Main Street move a block south because of the density and activity because of this project. So I, I think having open alley, I think this is probably one of, we're trying to get to more successful alleys that can manage. I think there's a big garbage issue downtown. I think there's traffic and loading issues downtown, and this is giving you the room to do a lot of those things that other historic alleys don't afford. So I think, I think it's a great effort to kind of consider what you have to work with, which is not breaking up that Main Street, two short runs on the other two sides, which become conflict points if you have gaps. So I, I appreciate it. That's it. Thanks.
So a couple of comments for me. So in regards to the alley, so I live two blocks from this, from this building. And then this alley is like reused. Neighbors from Packard to, whether they're using it for a cut through or whatever their reason is, the, the alley is such that I think it's going to be, the use of it is going to continue, especially with neighbors living in this building. It's going to be a pretty heavily used area. And with regards to public art, you know, there's been some conversation with it. But, you know, just looking at the wall there, there's plenty of room for wall art there. And so I guess I'm hoping that Landmark would commit to doing some public art along the alley just because it's so widely used. Residents are going to be using it. So I'm hoping to have some commitment in that regard. I'm sure the Ann Arbor Art Center is happy to help you put up more artwork. I'm sure they will figure out a way to get more artists involved in the community. So I think that's something that's really needed. And I, my hope is that before this lands at City Council, Commissioner Ackerman can make sure that, you know, hopefully there's some additional public art. With a building this size, to have one real one piece, seems like we could do a lot better here. And being that the alley is so, so well-used, I think that's a great spot to invigorate that alley. And, you know, we're seeing a lot of alleys being used in other cities, and the hope is down the road that'll be the case in Ann Arbor. So question in regards to the traffic study. Was the traffic study done with regards to, or did it take into account of the changes that have recently occurred on William with regards to the bike lane? Scott, cover that. Well, I guess let's, let's start, when was the traffic study done?
I would say it was cold. It was after, it was after State Street reopened. We had to wait. Do you remember State Street was closed?
So September?
Which totally changed the dynamics of people going north and south in the city. So we had to wait until State Street reopened. I think that was the end of January, February? About that time?
Okay.
So, yes, the, the bike lane was, was totally contemplated at the time and, and actually entirely planned at that point. I mean, it was ready for a spring start. So that was taken into account when they, when they considered the traffic movements and flows and patterns, so.
Okay. So that was my concern of just, you know, that has drastically changed what William looks like. For, you know, there, there have been a lot of positives. There's also been some negatives in that regard. Was there any additional, I did not get a chance to actually find the traffic study, but was there any additional information with regards to any precautions or any other actions that the city or the developer should take for, in regards to traffic safety and such? With, you know, the way the alleys, the way they're structured, especially exiting onto Packard where you have an intersection right- Packard where you have an intersection right there, crosswalk, was there any with regards to one way, the other way, making it, doing any changes there?
No, not actually on Packard. On, on Williams, it was suggested, and we've done this in other places such as 611 East University where people were pulling out of, of that development there onto the sidewalk. It suggested that a mirror be put up so that a driver can see in the opposite direction.
Okay.
So, yeah, actually, you know, the William Street entrance is a little more problematic than Packard actually, because Packard, you get a better view, you've got a longer shot. I mean, if you were look at, you know, you look at the driveway going onto Packard and to the left, you can see a hundred yards, to the right, you have a pretty good view all the way to the intersection. Pulling out between the Beer Depot and the new building is a little more problematic and that's where it was suggested that a mirror be put up.
Okay. Thank you. And then any, any idea what the plans are for retail? You know, we've seen some buildings on South Main that have been built that have, add empty retail spots. Is there a plan at this point for retail?
We do not have any specific tenants lined up at this point. We have included the infrastructure in terms of, you know, grease traps and plumbing and whatnot for the retail space that exists to be up to 80% restaurant, but don't have any actual tenants yet.
Okay. And I think overall, based on, you know, I've been following this building since the submission happened, actually probably in the last year of the initial submission. So design wise, I think it looks a lot better, so I compliment the design team on that. Based on what I initially thought, saw, I didn't know how that would actually get through design board without some comments and obviously didn't. So thank you to the petitioner for making the changes that needed to happen to make it more attractive. Commissioner Briggs?
Just one small comment. Thanks for including the dark skies compliant lighting, just one little piece to possibly look at if it can be integrated at all. There's so much glass on that corner, which I love aesthetically, but the more I learn about bird deaths and collisions in urban buildings, if there's anybody on your team that just wants to just look and see if there's any small ways to prevent those collisions, that would be a great thing to be looking at. I don't know if it'd earn you another quarter point or not, but thanks.
Commissioner Ackerman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quickly, I think the alley at William is a great space for a mural. I think it would really liven it up if you're looking for any direction. I echo that. And I think also, I think Commissioner Gibrandle had a great point about William and Main, about really having the opportunity to do something signature there that invites people to cross the street and, you know, interface with your building more and that part of downtown more. We recently made a similar request to Vic Village South on the other side of downtown and between Planning Commission and City Council, they were able to actually make a big improvement that added a lot of quality and character to the corner of their building, which is in an iconic location as well. So maybe don't replicate what they did, but take notes. I think the, I respect like that you're mirroring kind of the Main Street at Packard and Main Street at William. I think it works for the Packard just because it's a little shorter, but it's a lot of the same at William and Main. I think something to really bring that, that to life would be great. And then to put a finer point onto Commissioner Abrams' lob, a question for the developer, would you put four units of affordable housing into this building?
I mean, so from a, I mean, from a practical standpoint, we're always trying to balance, you know, having a project that's economically viable while competing with construction costs, the need to have a very sustainable building, which also increase the cost of the project and the materials that are, you know, required in the city of Ann Arbor. And so we have pretty much done everything that we can to, in terms of, you know, trying to find that balance on this project in terms of design, aesthetics, building design and unit mix to make a project that works. And so we can, you know, try and explore that further, but, you know, I can't say that definitively right now.
Okay. What's, what will the, do you have an anticipation of what rents will be for a one bedroom?
I don't have a specific number right now, but we've studied the Ann Arbor market pretty extensively in terms of.
Twenty-two hundred?
Underwriting. That's probably in the ballpark. So, you know, we.
So you're looking at like an impact, so two additional affordable units would be an impact of about $24,000 a year?
That, that sounds in the ballpark. Sounds in the ballpark.
Okay. Can you perform a take twenty-four thousand?
It's not, it's not quite a fair comparison though, because the city of Ann Arbor, one bed affordable unit has to be a minimum of 600 square feet, which is substantially larger than, you know, what we're currently planning for, say, a studio unit in the building. So, you know, increasing the number of affordable units will have an outsized impact on the rest of the unit mix because of that minimum size requirement is currently contemplated in the code. So I don't think that's quite exactly the economic difference.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I get, but you are including 10% of your units are one bedroom. So are those around 600 square feet?
They're all smaller.
They're all smaller than 600?
Yeah, that, I mean, that portion of the code, honestly, it's gone right after this or maybe a few other projects. It's just outdated unfortunately. The size is really big. 600 square feet is a really, really big one bedroom. We had.
It's bigger than my one bedroom.
Yeah. So, I mean, it, you know, to, right now, those are two specific units that are larger than any of the other one bedrooms. I mean, I wish there was ability to do four studios or something else, because that still would accommodate the goal. You'd get more units, but the square footage could be much smaller. It's the same square footage as other units within the building, so it's not like we were trying to pull a vast one on anybody.
Okay.
Things have just really shrunk and it's more about offering all these amenity spaces for everybody to share outside of their living area as opposed to being inside of it.
Right. All right. I'll ask you the same question when we see you at a different table. I sit over there, so.
And I mean, I didn't, and I mean that in a serious sense, we, we will look into it legitimately.
Great, thank you.
Okay, can I ask my question? If we do look into it, since I'm the one who's going to have to look into it, is it possible to come back with a smaller, practical sized unit for consideration if there were more of them?
I would leave you to discuss that with staff and city attorney, probably.
I think staff will try to do everything they possibly can to try to make that happen.
I think that's a reasonable request.
And I for one would say that as long as it's not significantly smaller than what you have offered in the building, I think that was the intent and I know things are changing, but that does seem big to me. So just in terms of staff's, like, hearing what one of us has to say, I would say if they meet what, you know, that they're already offering, then that seems totally legitimate to me. Because that seems like a hole in our code, frankly, when I hear that, you know, that it's 600 square feet, so.
Pretty sure someone's going to bring it up in Commission Proposed Business.
It's, I mean, it's already taken care of.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true.
Moving forward.
Not for this project, yeah. All right, further discussion. All right, ready for a vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved? Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And thank you for bringing those samples. I think you're one of the very first.
Oh, good.
And that, that was very helpful, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is 2511 Newport Road Annexation and Zoning, the Lockman property for city council. We will begin with a staff report.
The site is located on the west side of Newport Road, north of Burb Road. The site is in the Huron River watershed. Petitioner requested annexation of 1.55 acre parcel in Ann Arbor Township and R1A single family zoning. Petitioners requesting annexation of this parcel since it is within the contiguous boundary limits of the city. The owner has requested water and sanitary sewer service from the city since their septic system has failed. Staff recommends this petition be approved because the property is within the city's utility service area and the proposed R1A zoning is consistent with the adjacent zoning, surrounding land uses and the adopted land use plan, which recommends single family detached uses.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing on this item. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the planning commission, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and you'll have up to three minutes to address the planning commission. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve the Lowman Annexation and R1A Single Family Dwelling District Zoning, 2511 Newport Road. I move by Commissioner Ackerman, seconded by Commissioner Sovey. Any discussion? Commissioner Woods?
So my question is, given the information that Commissioner Ackerman gave us earlier, could you please explain to us how we are to proceed on this particular item, given the possibility of some legal issues?
Happy to. There are two types of annexations that we work with the city. One with our owner initiated annexation such as this, where an individual property owner needs water, sanitary typically, and submits a petition, pays a fee. That's, those are petitions that are never contested. Separately, we have a second way that we go about annexing township filing parcels and that's through what we call a city initiated process. And that includes city staff identifying parcels that we think might make sense to be annexed and submitting our own application materials to the state boundary commission, which is a different commission entirely from the other process that you see regularly in terms of these owner initiated annexations. So what member Ackerman mentioned was that we had submitted petitions for our second round of annexations and the chair of LAH, Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, denied the petitions for Ann Arbor Township parcels and Pittsfield Township parcels. She approved the petitions for SiO Township because all those are vacant parcels and we would not be requiring connection to water or sanitary in those cases. The boundary commission itself recommended against annexation for Ann Arbor Township and for Pittsfield Township because they did not like the idea of the city forcing people to connect if they had functioning utility systems like well and septic. So two different routes. You'll probably continue to see more of these trickle in, these owner initiated annexations. And I think the round two petitions, as council member Ackerman pointed out, will have a different story.
Okay. Thank you, that was helpful.
Commissioner Gibrandle?
Yeah, I have the same question.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, it's 2731 Newport Road Annexation and Zoning, Talpos Knight property for city council approval. We'll begin with a staff report.
The site is located on the west side of Newport Road between White Oak Drive and Holyoke Lane. It's in Ward 1. Petitioners requested annexation from Ann Arbor Township and R1A zoning for this 1.3 acre parcel. There's a single family home on, on the parcel. Staff recommends the petition be approved because the lots are within the city's water and sewer service area and the recommended zoning is consistent with the adjacent zoning and surrounding land uses as well as the city master plan.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the planning commission, please step up to the podium, state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes to address the planning commission. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve 2731 Newport Road Annexation and R1A Single Family Dwelling District Zoning. Move by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Woods. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Moving on to audience participation, this is the time for members of the audience to address the planning commission in regards to any item at all. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the planning commission, please step up to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll move on to Commission Proposed Business. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. Mr. Khan, could you please add to our, have Mr. Leonard add to our list of things that we need to talk about at some point? Loading and delivery zones and understanding, I feel like we've talked about this before and potentially that this was part of the non-motorized, I don't know, just trying to understand what's going on, particularly in like the D1 and D2 districts, I think would be really helpful and what our options are.
Will do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ackerman?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I was really encouraged to hear that ORC is talking about waiving solar panels as part of the height calculation and then also incentivizing EV. The other one I heard tonight was maybe reexamining LEED as the criteria we use for incentivizing bonus FAR. If, obviously I don't know enough to make any determinations now, but it sounded as though the developer was saying they get a large number of their 50 some points by just being in an urban area and by definition, all of these projects will be in urban areas. And so if we want to be incentivizing certain sustainable practices to achieve our goals, maybe LEED isn't the criteria to use. So another thought.
And just to add to that, I believe previously, part of the reason why many of the petitioners did not do the LEED certification was due to the cost, even though they were doing everything they had to do, the cost was one of the bigger items. So that's another reason to take a look at it. If it's just the cost, maybe there's some other metrics that we can put in place that is not so.
That is like the administrative cost of actually participating in LEED's programs as opposed to the cost of.
Maybe they could offer affordable units in lieu of those costs, so something to look at.
Further, Commission Proposed Business? Commissioner Abrams?
The 600 square foot minimum for the affordable unit, is that already a non-issue in the new, so how does a new premium, is there a minimum in the new premium that's lower or there's no minimum?
I'm afraid I did not work on that section of code, so it's so new that I've never used it.
Yeah.
So I'm afraid I'm not in the position to answer. Maybe there's someone else on the commission.
I mean, I could probably go do the research and find out. I just thought if anybody knew, is curious.
My recollection is that building code would be what governs it now. That instead of trying to regulate affordable units separately, we say they can just be part of the mix of whatever you're building otherwise.
Okay. And I kind of feel like it's based on floor area? That was part of the discussion about like this percentage of floor area needed to be affordable, however many, no? Does that sound right?
I think it was floor area and then building code as well.
Exactly. So, so building code is going to govern how small and like what amenities you have to have, but I think it was, we don't care how you parse it up, like this amount of floor area needs to be.
Right. And I think we, during that discussion, there were units that they were throwing out that were like 300 and some square feet.
Yeah. But again, I'm trying to dig it out and because this is subsequent to UDC, it's not quite as easy to find anymore because.
Part of the, part of the trade-offs, it was floor area, a ratio of floor area and building code and the logic was the, the kind of economic rationale of building kitchens and bathrooms and what that looks like for, because the debate between it when we adopted the new variation is how many kitchens do you build for like a six bedroom versus, you know, two bedrooms with one kitchen versus. one kitchen versus a six bedroom with one kitchen and those sorts of things. But we had some developer feedback and the amount of floor area that it really does kind of balance out within the unit structure. And so we don't, I don't believe it's on square footage or unit, just a ratio of square footage in total of the residential.
Okay.
It's the only baseline. Thanks.
Any other Commission Propose Business? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Woods, seconded by Commissioner Gibrandle. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't follow what Vic Village South did for their...